We'll call the meeting to order of the planning commission?
You're here.
Okay. Got everybody's attention. A couple announcements. Item number one on the agenda is being continued to the August 2nd meeting. So, item 1A and 1B, the planned unit development on Kirkham Second Edition, located at 1129 and 1131 14th Street North, the TKE fraternity house, that will be continued. So, we will have no discussion on it today. If there is anybody that's here in the audience that wishes to speak on it, we will take your comments, but I don't think anybody here is to speak on it. But if you, anybody comes in, we can handle that. Otherwise, it's being continued to next month, August 2nd. Another item is that there was an updated agenda that was sent out. So, commissioners, if you didn't see the updated agenda, there's an item D1 that was added. It's a joint planning engineering overview of upcoming projects. So, we have a fairly short meeting likely today, so that'll be a good addition on here. In addition to that, we have a new planning commissioner with us, so we're at nine. That's pretty good. Commissioner Brett Shuey is with us. He's a, I don't know if you want to introduce yourself, but otherwise, everyone take a chance to meet him when we have a break, please. Otherwise, we thank you for joining aboard.
Great, thank you. Yeah, seventeen-year resident of Fargo area and Highland Park, North County Road 20, so the long-awaited seat from the county has been filled, so.
Yeah, Commissioner Shuey is our extraterritorial member, and I thought that might be interesting to spend a minute on anyways. Alyssa from the city attorney's office has a little update on what is an ET member, why do we have it, and how is it the same or different than what all of our jobs are?
Sure, absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, the century code and section 200803A1 of the land development code do provide that the planning commission shall consist of three members that are appointed by the Cass County Board of Commissioners, and these commissioners would reside outside of Fargo. They're not Fargo residents, but they, given the planning commission does make those recommendations and does take action in the city's ETJ, then the city is required to have some representation from that area. And that's pretty much about it.
Yeah, and you know, she did say, as you said, we had three openings. So, if anybody's watching or you know somebody that lives in the ET area, you know, please talk to either planning staff here or else talk with the county folks, and they will work toward that end. But it's a good perspective to have, and so we're happy to have you aboard. Mary Scherling was our last one, which has been some time now, and so it's, we're happy to have you aboard. Moving on to the agenda, item number A, approve the order of agenda that is with item D1. I'd take a motion to approve the order of agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Motion passes. Moving on to item number B, the minutes from our meeting of June 7th. Everybody had a chance to take a look at those? Take a motion to approve?
So move.
Move motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Motion passes. Moving on to the public hearing items, again, items 1A and 1B are continued to next meeting, so we'll move on to item number two, 2A. We have Donald will come join us and introduce the item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon, commissioners. Donald Kress with the Department of Planning and Development. Our first item, item 2A and 2B here, is in the Valley View Edition, a growth plan amendment and zone change. This property is located at 3954th Street South, so there's 40th Avenue South, 51st Street, 54th Street, Independence Elementary School here in South Fargo. The project site is undeveloped. It was platted in 2013 and has never been developed. So, there's just a couple of different views of it, looking southwest here and then looking across the north side where a sidewalk will be added as development happens on this property. There, again, there are two entitlements here. One is a growth plan designation change. The current growth plan designation, the 2003 Southwest Future Land Use Plan, which covers this area, is either medium, either low to medium density residential or medium to high density residential. So, you could have nearly any type of residential on that site that you would propose. This site, since it's been platted in 2013, has always been proposed as a residential development. The applicant proposes to modify that somewhat to be able to have the designation of commercial or medium to high density residential. He does have some intended plans for this project that he can describe to you when it's his turn to speak. We took this through the review process as is required by our ordinance. We did notify the surrounding owners and hold a public meeting, open house, if anyone cared to attend. We did not get any attendees, but we had the meeting anyway. And we did get one phone call from a neighbor in the area, talked to that person and let her know what was going on. She did not express any opposition. So, that's part of the review process for the growth plan amendment. So, this would allow both commercial development and commercial zoning, as well as if in the future there were ever some mixed use proposals coming forward, that would enable you to do that on this property as well. So, again, that's entitlement number one is the growth plan amendment. Number two is the zone change. As you see, the property here is Zoned MR3 Multi-Dwelling Residential. The proposed zone change is to LC Limited Commercial with a conditional overlay, which as you commissioners know is something we often do on properties that are along an arterial street. And also in this neighborhood here, we eliminated a few of the uses that probably would not be compatible with the neighborhood. And this conditional overlay, as they almost all do, involves some site design pedestrian connectivity requirements for any future development, commercial or residential on that property. The applicant's representative, this is just a growth plan amendment and a zone change. There is no subdivision to this. The applicant's representative, Brian Konowski of Epic Companies, is with us this afternoon and may wish to address the commission. Staff's recommendation is stated in your staff report and shown on the screen. That concludes staff's presentation. Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you, Donald. Any questions for Donald from the commission?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So, the property, is it to the east? That's undeveloped?
Yes, ma'am.
What would be the expectation with that zoning?
Well, that one's got a couple of structural problems to deal with develop on it. That was Zoned MR3. It could remain that. That property is not affected by this growth plan amendment or zone change. The applicant does own that, you own that too, don't you, Mr. Konowski? Okay. And perhaps he can tell us what, if he has any plan for that. Thank you, ma'am.
Any other questions for Donald? We'll invite the applicant up to speak, if that's all right. Please introduce yourself when you get to the podium.
My name is Brian Konowski. I'm the owner of the property, and I can answer any questions you have.
Thanks. Commissioners, any questions for the applicant?
I would just pose the same question to you as far as the undeveloped property next to it. Is there any plans or any?
We have a plan for an apartment on that, the small sliver right now. That area, that is in the small area and then out into that intersection, actually was a borrow pit in one of the big floods. And we did have townhomes planned to go there. As we started to dig those, we found that the soil had all been disturbed, and we need to do something that goes deeper. So, we're going to do something with underground parking there, is the reason that that is staying that way.
I have a question for you, too. You know, one of the most common comments we get, I think, related to city planning is the whole idea of leapfrog and sprawl. And so, when you come across these properties that are kind of large infill properties, you know, you kind of wonder why they haven't been developed, you know, because I think we get critiqued on, you know, trying to stay orderly on this. And I guess, if you had any comments on why something like this property takes, you know, a decade when everything else around it has been done, what's?
For somebody like me, it's usually capacity. You can only do so much. And when I had 180 acres out here and I was doing it on my own, it takes some time.
Yeah.
That's the big thing. So, and certain times, you go out and you get bids, and you think you've got a great plan, and all of a sudden, the bids come back and it just doesn't fit in your financial model, and you got to go back to the drawing board, or you just hit the brakes, things like that.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you. Anybody else from the public wish to address this item? Anybody else from the public? Seeing nobody from the public, we'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, what are your wishes?
Could we discuss a little bit about the amendment to the growth plan? I'm just, when we're doing changes like this, I mean, the application, it seems to fit with the location and with the use, the surrounding use. So, I don't have any necessary, I don't necessarily have any objections to that. I'm just curious, when we're amending growth plans, and I realize that ours is getting to a point where it's, we're coming up on the latter year, time to review and renew, but I guess, I guess I'm wondering if, I'm just concerned that this could become a habit, where we're looking at amending the growth plan to adapt to the desires or the needs of the developers.
Sure. Maybe staff, if you'd talk to us about the growth plan process?
I'll start, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. So, commissioners, as you see, there are findings for the growth plan amendment that are included in your packet. And those are like the findings for all the other decisions you make. And we do, you know, go through this, as you're familiar with our review process generally, go through this in a lot of detail, especially when anyone proposes a growth plan amendment. We start looking at that very seriously and, you know, get in contact with the neighborhood. There is the required meeting, plus sometimes we do additional meetings before that. In this situation, the proposed zoning is deliberately a low-key zoning, basically a low-intensity zoning. You know, to put a higher intensity zoning here, you know, might not be appropriate for this time. And as you see, we, it does support some of the, some of the points of the growth plan in there, as stated in your findings. And if you have, you know, an overall bigger policy question, our director, assistant director can take that on.
I think I was just more or less asking for the general public.
Yes.
So that they understand the process of when we're going, what the planning department goes through when they're looking at amending the growth plan.
Yes, ma'am. And, yes.
Okay, Nicole, go ahead.
Well, and I'd say thank you for the question and thanks for your comment, Donald. I think too, the 2003 plan, and then there's the, there's so many plans. There's the 2003 and then the 2007 plan. And back when I was in Donald's shoes, one of the land use plan that came down, veterans, and then across 40th, I'd say where the site is today, and then all the way where you see the red and orange stripe up, veterans, that was all that same color. And I think as we get more, that land use category is so big. And I think when some of the land uses started getting more specific, I remember there's a lot of public discussion on those changes that led us to kind of compromises, if you will, of the, to where it is today. And we've learned a lot of lessons, you know, there's that twenty-year vision, and then there's maybe like that bite-sized ten-year vision, and then maybe five-year vision as things happen or change quicker and quicker. And so, what does that adaptation look like? I think a question for the future, but also as the developer was also mentioning too, as he's kind of trying to get finer and finer details into his goals and the neighborhood goals as it starts to develop. And so, this land use is a little bit more, as Donald was mentioning, it's very specific. And so, how we, you know, kind of get those better tools, if you will, to be specific for this type of use that we want, but then open enough where it gives some vision as well as flexibility. So, that's going to be the million-dollar question as we move forward into our long-range planning practices as well. It is a great question and a lot to talk about, which I hope to do more brown bag type of things or conversation between the development community and the public and the commission as well.
And Donald, I do believe you did do a public meeting on this as well?
Yes, sir, that's correct. Our ordinance requires that whenever we have a growth plan amendment, we notify the owners in the surrounding area, just as we do for all notifications, and host a public meeting. This one was in person at the city hall last Wednesday, June 29th. We did not get any response, but Mr. Konowski and I were here the whole time. So, sometimes we get a lot, sometimes we don't get any, but we hold the meeting in any case. And we give everyone, you know, sufficient notice of, you know, ten or more days, so, you know, they can plan to attend if possible. And they can always contact staff. Our notices always include our phone number and email address, so they can contact us directly if they have any questions.
Thanks. Now, go ahead.
I'd like to ask Nicole, excuse me, I know that there's, there have been many plans, and the thing that we're coming up across is the limitation of expansion of Fargo to the south. Excuse me. And I'm just wondering if, I just remember and recognize that there have been variances made that the developers wanted and weren't necessarily the vision coming through the plan or the planning department. How much of a problem do you see that?
I'd say I don't know if I see that really as a problem, especially this part of the community. I mean, I think you'll see our, you know, kind of honest recommendation as a staff report in that line of thinking. So, if there was something that was completely not on vision or, you know, kind of a struggle, if you will, between a point of view from a, you know, long-range plan holding versus developer, you would see that recommendation for denial, for sure. I don't, I think these types of changes and the specifics, I think you're going to get, maybe a better way to answer that is, you saw it in last month's case in Urban Plains, we're getting a little off-topic on this case, but long story is, I think you'll see more and more specific requests. So, we're pushing harder as part of conditional overlays, conditional use permits, and PUDs on what specifically do you want to build. There's a lot of, I think the, and Brian can talk to this more, but speculation is no longer a thing in this part of the city as costs and limited land is available. So, I think as you're seeing more specific, unique uses, like, I don't know if we talked about the Montessori school, you know, it's a very specific use, you know, and so, working on that level of detail with developers is probably more the norm.
Now, thank you. I don't see anything wrong with this particular project. It's just something that seems to come up again and again as to how actually are the plans that have been made if they're, if it's possible for them to happen.
Yeah.
And whether the vision that's come out of them is something that will be followed or if it'll be overridden. That was, that's kind of my concern.
I think as you get west, that will, you know, the large pond area and outside the edges, that's really where that's, that discussion's going to be spot on.
And commissioners, back in 2020, I believe it was, there were a couple cases that came to you that were proposed, growth plan amendments that staff opposed. Eventually, the developers resolved those to not need to change the growth plan amendment, so it eventually went forward. But we did recommend denial for those, as your commission took account of at that time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Schmidt?
Yeah, I had a question for you, Donald, about, when you give notices to the property owners within 300 feet, you know, it seems like there's never much of a response from neighbors, whether that's just that no one minds what's going on there, or, you know, you get a lot of feedback if it's a controversial project. But I guess, has planning looked at what's the best way to reach out to the surrounding neighborhood if, you know, if we want to look for more engagement and voices from people in that area?
The mail notification is pursuant to our ordinance and century code. I don't, you know, and again, we have the required meeting for this, and we often have, even for cases that don't have growth plan amendments, there are times we feel, you know, for certain neighborhoods, like if the neighborhood associations, those always include developer contact with the neighborhood. So, in those core neighborhoods where we have those organizations, that's a part of the review process as well, Commissioner Schmidt. And, but I don't know that there's any, anything beyond that, I don't know, in terms of outreach.
Okay. Yeah, I was just curious.
Yeah, there's also a newspaper notice. Again, these are things that are pursuant to state statute and our ordinance.
I think it's a good question, though, because the level of effort done or required is a little different when it goes from, you know, agricultural land to developed land than, you know, if you're redeveloping and we're changing the growth plan, you know, in an area that's already been fully built out, then the change is a bigger sort of shock to the neighborhood. But I think in these cases, we haven't seen a lot of attendance, because when it's an empty field, you expect something's going to be built there, and so it's not necessarily as big a shift.
But then, commissioners, you might remember a case a couple of years ago where there was an empty field where there was considerable neighborhood input, because they believed it was going to be something else, I believe, a park.
A park.
And so on. So, Commissioner Schmidt, the answer is unpredictable. We had, we had a two-lot subdivision or residential area in South Fargo, which I'd considered this before you were here, sort of considerable neighborhood input, so.
I'd just like to ask Donald whether there's ever been some consideration of expanding that 300 feet?
That would require a change to ordinances and statutes, ma'am.
Yes, I understand that. But has there been discussion?
I have never participated in such a discussion, ma'am. I don't know.
I think that'd be for the state legislation and as we, I think, Donald, maybe for a different brown bag discussion, but that's state legislation. We rely on our National League of Cities and others to help us pave that way.
Thank you.
Any other questions from staff? Any other discussions? Otherwise, if you flip back to the, thank you, recommended motion on the screen?
I'll move.
Go ahead.
I'll make the recommended motion as presented.
Second.
Staff.
Motion and a second to accept the findings and recommendations of staff. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, take the roll, please.
Gunkelman?
Aye.
Holtz?
Aye.
Shuey?
Aye.
Stoffrin?
Aye.
Morgan?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Rosenberg?
Aye.
Tassa?
Aye.
Schneider?
Aye.
Thank you, commissioners. The motion passes. Going on to item number three, we'll invite Megan up.
Good afternoon, chair and commissioners. Item three is Urban Plans by Brant Fifth Edition. This is a zoning change to repeal and reestablish a conditional overlay. The project, or the subject property is located at 2901 Uptown Way, and this is Lot 4, Block 1 of Urban Plans by Brant Fifth Edition. The applicant, Brian Patton-Gale, is here, should she have any questions. So, a little context here, you can see Veterans Boulevard. We're a bit north from the last application that you saw. Veterans Boulevard here, City of West Fargo on the west, and it's bounded on the north, just to the north, 28th Avenue, and on the south, Cedar Parkway. Just off-screen here is the Shields Arena, and then Family Wellness is right here. On your screen are some images, though a little bit hard to see. In the background here, this is on the south side looking north. This is McAllister's Deli. And then the lower image is looking just southeast on the trail adjacent to Veterans Boulevard. So, it's, a lot of this area is undeveloped. Jump back here. At the last commission meeting, this property, your commission reviewed two conditional use permits here. The application today is to modify the conditional overlay, which is ordinance 5153, to allow the use of limited vehicle service. There are no other changes proposed to the conditional overlay. Everything else would remain. The only change would be to remove that from the prohibited use list. Conditional overlays are, as we've talked a little bit, Brian, or Donald talked about that, an additional set of standards on a property. This conditional overlay has, is a more standard conditional overlay that has design standards and pedestrian connectivity and also things like prohibited uses. Staff has not heard or received any inquiries on the, regarding the application and is recommending approval. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Megan. Any questions for staff? Yeah, go ahead.
Megan, the conditional overlay is just for this lot only, the change?
Yes.
Or is it for more than, it's just for this lot to allow the car wash? So, removing limited vehicle service won't affect the rest of Urban Plains or?
Correct.
Any of the other?
Yep, it is just on this particular property.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question for Megan. So, when we established the first conditional overlay and we prohibited vehicle services, including car washes, now we want to remove it. I guess, what's staff's reasoning for wanting to strike that from the conditional overlay now? Do we think it's, it's consistent with the rest of the development that's going on there?
So, when the application came to staff and, so the owner is requesting this change and applicant, Brian Patton-Gale, came to us, and when reviewing against the criteria, staff found that all criteria were met. There are a handful of areas within the city that have specifically this use restricted, but a majority of our conditional overlays don't have this particular use as a restricted use, if that helps kind of give any context to this use in particular. But staff found that all criteria were met here.
Hey, I guess I'm curious on a follow-up is, what was the reason to have this in there in the first place? What was the reasoning for inclusion?
That's a great question. I, I believe that this prohibited use was from the initial establishment of the conditional overlay, which was a couple of decades ago. Not sure. My director might, Commissioner Rosenberg might remember, but yes, I believe as part of the Urban Plains as a whole, a lot of the overlay standards came through that mirrored covenants and a very planned community, if you will, that has since changed hands a number of times. I will say overly, the initial ordinance was above and beyond what staff would normally apply in the rest of our metro area.
Any other questions for staff?
I have a question. So, as this is described, vehicle service, without being more specific, if this is removed here for the conditional overlay, does vehicle services also include things like auto repair, since it isn't specified?
So, just, so if you can see on the screen, item 4.4 is vehicle repair. And so, there's a distinction in that land development code between the two. And so, limited has more to do with something where somebody is still present, whereas the vehicle repair often refers to something where you would leave, leave it, and as a customer, you would go away, and kind of that operation would happen. And so, the limited is where, like a, like a car wash, like a tire service area where you would still, you would be there, they would just quickly change your tires, that kind of thing. So, vehicle repair would still be a prohibited use here.
Okay. It would be really interesting to see what falls into those categories, and if this is really the vision of the developers. Because if it's legal here for a car wash, it might apply to other things as well. True?
It could. There, so there are other uses listed in under limited vehicle service use that could go here. They are, from memory, pretty consistent. They're, they don't vary wildly. Another one would be like a gas station. So, similar uses where someone may be, you know, refueling at their vehicle. I can grab the land development code if you would prefer to have kind of that full list of what uses might fit in there.
Okay. Well, I'm just interested in it generally, rather than specifically, but it's, since it's, it's really wide in terms of the description, I just thought it would probably include a lot of other things, too.
And I think, Donald, oh, Mark's got the code here.
Yeah, Mark, go ahead.
It is pretty limited in what it includes. Its examples are full service, mini-service, and self-service gas stations, car washes, and quick loop services. That's under vehicle service limited. Accessory uses are tire repairs and tire sales. So, anything greater than that falls into the vehicle repair category.
I see. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Mr. Patton-Gil, you have anything to add?
Afternoon, commissioners. Yes, I can speak to some of the questions about the use restrictions that was put in by the Brant Corporation when they originally developed most of Urban Plains. They established this conditional overlay. Originally, it's been reworked, I think, twice now over the years, and those uses were just part of the original current owner who is aware of what's going there. Additionally, to that respect, they also have architectural approval and review of the site plan. So the former owner who developed and encouraged those use restrictions in the conditional overlay were fully aware of what was going into this site after they sold it. It's actually in for permanent with the city now, as far as that goes. So we're still meeting all the other conditional overlays. Brant's Corporation's reviewed this and approved the site plan as proposed. So they're fully aware of what's going in there as far as, you know, their changes to the years from the original growth plan and sort of master plan that it sort of had in that area as it's sort of changed over the years.
Any questions for the applicant?
I have one question. Is access through Uptown Way?
Yes.
Okay.
There will be no additional accesses off of Veterans.
Good question. Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
For the public hearing, anybody in the public wish to say anything? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
Should we say something?
Take the podium, please. We'll close the public hearing. Any comments from Commissioners or otherwise, what are your wishes?
Is 2020, or 2022 the year of the car washes?
Yes, I think so.
2021.
2022. We have a lot of dirty cars in Fargo, apparently.
I, I do have a, a comment on this one. Though I know that the vision of this whole neighborhood has changed many times. I, I think there's still components of that original vision that are kind of staying true to this area here with the Uptown and Main development, the restaurants that have been added over here, and the building on our construction across the street from this, and then the one we heard last month. So we're looking at several hundred people living in a mixed use area here, and I don't think that a car wash fits into that vision. Uptown Way is a, it's, the road is less wide, it's more pedestrian focused. A car wash has, you know, it's really loud. I don't think having a apartment building across from the car wash is going to be all too pleasant. Plus, just with the additional vehicles that are going to be accessing the car wash pretty much consistently, it's not conducive to pedestrian activity, which is, you know, which was the goal of this Uptown Way and which is what the development has been, you know, implying as it's been going. So I, I don't think this particular use of this site fits that vision, and I actually think it makes it worse over here.
Anybody else have comments?
I, I would tend to agree with, with what Commissioner Schmidt was saying. I think when we're looking at our, our growth plan and the, and the use of the area and we're trying to keep things walkable and pedestrian friendly, not to mention the bizarre resurgence of numerous car washes throughout the city, it seems a little out of place here. That being said, I understand that it's not necessarily our job to dictate the success or failure of the business, though I, though I do tend to agree with Commissioner Schmidt.
Yeah, I don't disagree either. I mean, I think about where are the other car washes we've approved because you don't want to approve some and not others, but they're on, they're different, they're located differently than this, for sure. The vision of Uptown Way is, that was sold to us, is not, not this, I guess. I'd agree with that. Rocky? Yeah, go ahead.
Um, I, that, those things all may be true, but the enclave hasn't stepped forward and complained about it. They're not concerned. And they're the builders of all the apartments back there. And they know full well what's happening. It is on a busy road anyway. But the reality is, is this is part of the problem I was just talking to Mark about was, it'd be nice if I could see the roads that were planned in here and what they were going to look like as making this decision part of planning. Engineering takes it over, the city does all their work. They're going to make those requirements that you just asked for, because that's what we talked about Jeremy Gordon and everybody else is going to make sure that if it is a back road like that, there's going to be pedestrian room, there's going to be things that are going to be required of them, and they're going to have, you know, they have requirements within the code of how many cars can be stacked and all of those things come into play that are going to make the car wash do what's right to protect the neighborhood from that standpoint. So I think at the end of the day, what, what the developer wanted to do, whatever, 20 years ago almost now, and what they're doing today, they came in with the original plan. They built this. The city didn't require them to do this overlay. They requested this overlay, and now they're asking to adjust it, and there's a buyer that wants this to put a car wash in. So I don't see how we can say no from that standpoint. I think we can ask a lot of questions of planning, as planning Commissioners, talk about things that we'd like to see more of, but at the end of the day, I think that what we're asking for and what we're, we can't assume. I can't, we can't make the assumption that there's a bunch of houses, there's a bunch of people here, and they're going to all be upset someday. I, I don't know how I can make that decision when somebody's invested money and time and has been working on getting it approved and feels comfortable that it's happening.
Thanks. You know, I, I agree with that to a point, except for this can't be built by right, you know, so it's not a from scratch discussion. You know, it's, the rules right now says this cannot be built here. So they're asking us to change the rules. But I think it's a slightly different situation. Some of those things still apply to our decision.
Except they created the rules, was my point. The developer did.
But we approved the rules.
Right. But the developer's asking to adjust the rules, but not go beyond the, the standards is what I'm saying. That's all. I, I agree, Rocky, that we shouldn't, we, we have to review these and look at them, and that they still are taking a risk by buying property. No, no question. But the, the car wash, well, what else is going to go in there? I mean, whatever's going to go in there on, on Veterans is going to be busy. It's going to be another restaurant, whatever it's going to be, it's going to have traffic because you can't afford to buy land on Veterans and develop it unless it's a high use location.
Yep.
So that's all I'm saying.
Well, I think in this instance, we're specifically talking about a, we're not really talking about Veterans, but it's accessed through Uptown Way, which is a pedestrianized street. And that's what it's been designed as, and that's what, I mean, that's the vision that they've been selling us. And this is clearly not a pedestrian focused amenity for this neighborhood at all. So I don't think it fits in with the vision at all.
But you keep talking pedestrian, yet all the car traffic has to come on that road, no matter where it's going. So why? I get a little hung up on pedestrian walkways when we, people are only walking here maybe three months out of the year. I hate to say that. Maybe five months. But again, that traffic though, that is where the cars go too. So we're not really doing anything different. It's still a path for cars because of the limited access. They had to do that because the limited access off of Veterans, meaning it's a major thoroughfare. Their access has to be from the back. Now, what do they want to call it, what they called it? That was their way of terminology, making it sound good and look good. But it's still, it is still the car path for all of those businesses up and down that piece of property.
I guess if we're going to listen to developers, that's not what the developers said.
What's that?
I mean, they sold us on the vision that you would go to a show at Shields Arena and then you'd walk to the restaurant, or you'd walk to some service.
You really think people?
That's what the developers, and so if we're listening, as, as Mr. Rosenberg said that, well, now the developers want to change it, we can't listen to their logic on one thing and then not on the other. I mean, they came in and sold us the vision. So I, I guess the idea of this community here was to be walkable.
Walkable, fine, except car traffic for anybody else other than people living there has to come through this back way. Has to.
So let's make it worse for the pedestrians?
What's that?
Let's make it worse for the pedestrians in Uptown Way then, to accommodate the cars?
Well, okay, so I want to buy that piece of property where the car wash is going. Am I going to fly people in on a helicopter?
No.
How are they going to get there? And where are they going to park?
I'm talking, we're talking specifically about a car wash, which functions a constant vehicles in and out.
Put a Burger King in there. Is that any different?
I mean, not really. I would probably have objections to that too.
Well, the, I, I think where we get hung up, and this is where I think we need some brown bags, is on what initial vision and where something ends up, things change. I mean, I've been in business for 35 years, and if I was building the same way I was building 20 years ago, I wouldn't be in business. So, I mean, visions change, and I think that's the, that's the, probably the beauty of our, of the, the planning process, is that we are able to adjust things. Because there isn't, I don't think we've got, well, if you look at any development that's over 20 years old that isn't completely finished off, I don't think there's a single one of them that we haven't adjusted. Because the, the vision, the vision changes, and I think we as a, I mean, again, we're not here to say, I mean, I, I, I don't argue the fact with you, but when you look at the reality of that Uptown Way, unless you're the living, unless, only the people living there are going to use it, the only traffic pattern on that back is to come down that road.
Is there not, there's no bus, there's no bus access?
People don't ride buses.
Well, I think, and I think that's the larger question here, is that when we are looking at, working with developers who are trying to make spaces in our communities more walkable, more pedestrian friendly, and then we are putting, we are changing zone, zones or making conditions that reduce the walkability, the, reduce the comfort and safety for people who are considering using public transportation, or are considering, because if people see that there's a parking lot or a car wash there, yeah, they're going to use it because the majority of the city is reliant on cars. And that's, I think, the bigger question here is when we're looking at shaping, shaping our communities and trying to design spaces that are friendlier to people who want to make the change, to rely less on their vehicle. This is exactly the kind of change that goes against that goal.
One, one of the things I look at, this property is very similar to where the car wash is on 45th Street, right next to the Starbucks, and I worked near there. That Starbucks makes that side road like Uptown Way inaccessible by car or pedestrian for hours a day because of backup. And with that car wash going in there, it's just worse. It's not even a drivable road. It's like a parking lot for the drive-through. And so there's no walkability, there's no drivability on it. That's what I worry about this turning into. And so it does disappoint me that the other developers aren't here because they sold us on a vision for this. And I think those of us have been here long enough have been sold on multiple visions for Urban Plains that have never come to fruition. And while we need to be flexible, at what point do we care what a vision is if we're too flexible?
I may not be looking at this properly, but Uptown Way, to the south of 28th, is moving through a residential neighborhood. Is that correct? No. No?
It's McAllister's Restaurant. It's a mixed, it's a mixed area.
South of 28th, that's McAllister's Restaurant.
Okay, but what about all this over here? Isn't that residential?
This, right? This for housing?
I don't know. Maybe we could ask staff to help us.
So just adjacent to 55th Street here, there's two, these two properties just directly east are mixed use developments. So those are, have some component of commercial, and I think both have enclosed parking on that first floor with residential above.
Seems chaotic to me. The site that's identified here, the subject property is isolated in terms of access. It doesn't seem like a good choice of location. I know the same problems exist on South University with Starbucks is too. I've seen people actually drive over the curbs to try to get out of the lines down there. And to increase traffic by installing a car wash, to me, doesn't make any sense. I would think decreasing traffic would be the better, better choice.
Do you think that Starbucks though on University has brought more people to that area with the addition of that? I would, you know, although it's maybe difficult to get in, I would say I go down University more because there's a Starbucks there and because there's redevelopment of that area. So.
Well, it hasn't, the redevelopment of that area hasn't really started yet, but I actually think it was an error putting a Starbucks in there. It's only caused traffic congestion and certainly doesn't do anything for the neighborhoods. To bring more people there doesn't mean that they're necessarily going to the, the bread store or to Luna. It just means there are more people at Star, at the Star, there are more people there because of the Starbucks.
And I, I think there's a good tangent discussion, just to make sure that we're relating it back to the item at hand.
Yeah, well, but it relates in my sense to why create a setting in which you're going to add traffic that isn't necessary. I would think calming traffic is the better thing to do in, in any place, any place.
And I'd like to just, just emphasize the, the vision that they sold. And you can even see it in the aerial here that they oriented all the buildings towards the street. You have the diagonal parking, which is, as planning has told us, that's conducive to pedestrian scale development. I mean, the McAllisters, the Cutting Edge Jewel are above there, Plaza Azteca, Uptown and Main, they're all oriented with the parallel, or the diagonal parking next to the street. And then we're going to get to a car wash, which is going to interrupt all of that. And, and our job's not to say, oh, car wash can go here, car wash can't go here. That's not our job. Our job is to decide if this is the fit for the community and essentially alter this conditional overlay. And I don't think it, you know, I don't think it enhances that at all. I think it's, it's just not consistent.
I have questions, since we have Brenda here from engineering. Are there any, what has gone into your thought processes, you've looked at this, looking at Uptown Way and the traffic and projected uses? You can pass, I didn't mean to put you on the spot, but if you had thoughts, we'd take them, it sounds like.
So, I don't know that I, so reword your question, because they aren't going to be allowed access on Veterans. There is a back road. Now, what I've heard on the conversation today is mixing a high use business with a pedestrian friendly roadway. And this is all private. There's no public roadway in here. All of this is private. So we evaluate that they meet fire codes and that they have the infrastructure in there to support the local needs. But as far as use, you know, we've talked about what if it's a Burger King, what if it's a McDonald's? That, any type of drive-through sees that regular traffic. And so you could get, where it's owned today, you could get a fast food restaurant in there. I just wanted to make sure I was right. So I mean, whether it's a car wash or a drive-through, you're still going to get that consistent vehicular traffic. Now, I will, I'll defer to planning. You know, is there something more we can do to maybe limit the access in and out? You know, so like, if it's off our public road, we have control over driveway widths, things like that. I don't know if there's more rules and regulations we can add, because we don't control driveway widths off of a private road. Once it's private, it's private. We don't evaluate a driveway width or anything. Maybe that's something I defer to planning. If there's any more regulations you can add to at least limit that access into that private road.
Well, and I think we just approved a similar one off of 52nd that is pretty similar. You can't get in off of 52nd and you go on a private road. So we did just approve this.
So, we did just approve this same thing on 52nd. And that's my neighborhood, so there's a Burger King, there's a car wash, and all of that you cannot get into from 52nd.
Go ahead, Scott.
Just a quick question. I know when, let's say if you had a, there was signage coming in, and you would, when you're talking about walkable neighborhoods, you don't want a sign that's big and gaudy and detracts from the neighborhood. Do you look at, at noise the same way? In the case of a car wash, you know, might be quite a bit noisier, does that detract the same way a big, gaudy sign might?
We would defer to the noise ordinance and/or, no, I would say, so there's, if you're asking me from a staff perspective and our technical expertise, yes, noise is a part of the environment that we all live, work, and play in. In terms of how we regulate noise in the conditional overlay or in the zoning code or in the regular municipal code, it varies. I don't know if we have anything specific to the conditional overlay here related to noise. I defer to Megan on that.
No, here, I don't believe there would be any restrictions on noise, but if residential protection standards applied, for example, there is noise requirements within there and then certain times of the day. So, as Nicole was saying, between the land development code and the municipal code, there are some restrictions on noise.
So, the conditional overlay, I mean, maybe to piggyback on Commissioner Stoffrin's question, you know, one thing I would want you guys not to lose sight on, first of all, this is fabulous conversation. We really appreciate, I know you might not think so, but from a staff perspective, I think Mark and I were just saying, I think it's been over a year since we've had probably, you know, really helpful dialogue, you know, in-titelled dialogue on this. I can see, hear and contemplation of many important topics. So, you know, thank you for taking the time on that. In terms of, one thing I would say on this particular application, we do have, you know, other conditional overlay language in here that applies that controls, you know, some aspects of walkability, whether it's, you know, landscaping, design standards, things like that. And maybe just to, and to affirm Brenda's comment, yes, if this was a, you know, a drive-through coffee shop or a drive-through hamburger spot, it would be allowed by right. You know, we would look at the overlay, apply those overlays, and the permit would be in today. I would say this is a similar conversation that we just had on the daycare and stuff we had along 51st Street where it had, that was oriented towards the park walkability. So, I think, I would just, I don't mean this facetiously, welcome to our world. This is what we deal with on a daily basis, and when we apply, you know, there's many different visions, points of view, community conversations happening here. And we'd be glad to help support breaking those down as much or as little as, as you would like.
Megan, I have a, I have a question for you. You know, Commissioner Rosenberg mentioned a comment about, you know, the developers who wrote the conditional overlay, you know, were okay with it being changed. Or, I guess I, I have a question. Do we know? You know, I mean, I realize the developer, the applicant here is not, is not Enclave, you know, or, and so it's different, the ownership changed, right, here? And so, do we know how the other, have they weighed in at all? The neighbors, I guess, is my question, maybe more specifically?
I have not received inquiry from the neighbors. But I do know that Enclave, you know, first approached the city a couple of months ago, inquiring about what was going on here. And I'm not sure exactly when the ownership changed, but that might be something that the applicant can answer.
So, I can answer some of those questions. So, yes, Enclave is aware of what's going in there. They are actually the reviewer for Brant as far as the architectural, the Brant Group, as far as the Architectural Review Committee. So, they've seen the full, the full site plan. We've worked with them back and forth with Brant and the current owner to get something that's acceptable to them. And to answer some of Commissioner Schmidt's comments is, we are preserving the diagonal parking along Uptown Way, and we are still having a very large walkable sidewalk that goes north and south along the western side of the site. So, we did continue that walkability down through that site. So, it still has that same look it currently has with the diagonal parking and the large wide sidewalk. It's a little hard to see in the aerials with that. But we still have that same look going south along the front of this property as well. And that was part of the back and forth with the, the Brant Corporation and Enclave was the reviewer, and like I said, they're familiar with what's going in there as they work on developing their properties on the east side there, so.
Yeah, you know, that makes me feel better, I guess. I would just pass on the comments that when a developer comes in and sells us a vision and then we rely on another developer's third-hand remarks on it, it, it does leave us in a little bit of a, does this meet the vision we were sold on or not? Because I, and we should care about that, I think.
They do, and unfortunately, in this case, the developer and the landowner are two different people. Unfortunately, in this case, like I said, Brant is a separate entity from Enclave Development Corporation. So, Enclave's sort of come in and been the primary developer on this. And obviously, Brant's the landowner, so they had a little different idea on what they wanted to do on this. But they have been, like I said, they've been very involved in this as far as the coordination with the McAllister site next door to it, the, you know, the multifamily mixed-use that's going across the street to the east. So, they've gone through all that review. They've seen the site plan. You know, we've went through several iterations with them to get something that was approved. And yes, their big concern also was to maintain sort of that continuous look that they have for the Uptown Way now with the, still the diagonal parking there and the walkability behind it, you know, and the landscaping behind that walk corridor. So, that is all incorporated there, and like I said, we've made, they've made a great effort between the two developers and two owners to coordinate all the properties as much as possible.
Thanks. I guess since I allowed the applicant to come back up, does anybody else have questions for him? Excuse him again. Okay, commissioners, any other comments? Just flip to the recommended motion, so we know it's staff's motion.
I'd like to make a motion to deny the application.
There's a motion to deny, I guess, before we get a second. Could I ask for a reason? I know we, as planning commission, we have to give a reason for denial.
Oh, okay. Well, I just think that it doesn't meet the vision that has been promoted in the past about the development of this, this piece of land. And I'm very concerned about the, the traffic and the lack of accessibility to the site. Is that good?
That's a motion, yeah.
Okay.
Is there a second? Is there a second to the motion? Seeing none, the motion dies for lack of second.
I move to approve with motion in the staff report.
Second.
There's a motion and a second for approval.
I, I, I think it's a really good discussion, and I'm glad you brought up the questions, as did everybody else. But I think that gives the developer and landlord a chance to, as they work on this, to make it fit the neighborhood better than they would have had without that discussion.
This was excellent learning discussion, so thank you.
Well, we were hoping it was a four-four vote, and you had to break the tie.
That's right. We planned this, so. Any other discussions on the motion? Seeing none, we'll take the roll. Or did we get a second? I think so. Yeah, yeah, Miranda seconded.
Schmidt?
No.
Morgan?
No.
Stoffrin?
Aye.
Rosenberg?
Aye.
Holtz?
No.
Gunkelman?
Aye.
Tossa?
Aye.
Shuey?
Aye.
Schneider?
Aye.
And the motion passes? Okay, we'll go on to item D1 because we are going to have a short meeting today, so we added this. But I think before we go to D1, we, we are going to take a break at the hour here. We'll try to just make it quick because we only have one item left, but let's just take a five-minute break. Okay, we'll call the meeting back to order. We have a D1, the staff presentation with jointly between planning and engineering on the overview of upcoming projects.
Yeah, good afternoon, commissioners. And we had informed our new commissioner that this is a new thing, so it's a perfect opportunity to, we had a chance to meet him on Friday last week. And I wanted to just kind of kick it off. We were gonna, Megan and Brenda are gonna do most of the talking, but really, the point of this is, for the first time in, since I can remember, we have the most kind of studies going on than we've ever had, you know, council governments. Usually, there's maybe like two or three a year or every two years, and there are these long corridor studies, and we get all into the weeds and details and have brown bags and talk about those corridors. And with the, and I think even just the last hour was evidence, you know, pre-pandemic, we stayed in kind of current operations mode, trying to keep the wheels on the train so that we could, on the track, so that we could, continuity of operations was our order of business. But we know now that we're not all back to normal, but at the same time, we know we've got gaps in communication. And so, really appreciative of this time for this hour of briefing. They have, Megan and Brenda and I are going to kick off a series of just updates and listing of projects. I think each of these updates could probably have its own hour-long brown bag or get into details. And, but feel free to ask questions along the way. It's about five to 10 minutes of slides or presentations, and then we're not going to keep you here all night, so we'll go from there. So, and then, for those that don't know, Brenda Derrick are city engineer. And so, yeah, so I guess Megan's going to kick us off here.
Yeah, so I'll start here. One of the plans, or one of the many plans that are happening right now, is the Fargo-Greenway study. So, this takes a look at the west side of the Red River and looks along north to south, a little bit in our extraterritorial areas and the drains. And so, what they're really, they're taking a little bit of a deeper dive. Some of you might be aware of the bike ped plan, bicycle pedestrian plan that happens, which is the next one on the list. But at this level, they're looking really more specifically into Fargo for connectivity, for connection needs, bridges, maintenance, safety, education, kind of all of those things, especially with our drains as well. And they'll also be kind of looking, though it's not quite so far south, but kind of also within how to connect to the metro trails, including the diversion and what is in the recreational plan for that. The bike plant, ped plan update is a metro-wide study, so everything within the MetroCog jurisdiction. So, that's West Fargo, Fargo, Moorhead, Dilworth, and kind of the Clay and Cass counties and kind of surrounding areas. So, they're a bit more broad look. It's a plan that happens every five years or that gets updated every five years. So, that plan is a little bit more consistent in terms of kind of the content of it and, but looks more at kind of a regional, regional scale, and the Greenway study is real specific to Fargo.
And I think also you'll see many of these are, some are just kicking off, some are halfway, and some are getting close to the end. And I think we did estimate that the Greenway study is maybe about halfway. And I don't know if we know the bike ped plan on...
Yep, so the bike ped plan is going to be wrapping up here in a few months if they're kind of on their same timeline, and the Greenway study is over the winter. So, thanks. So, the, so if anybody has any more interest or wants to know where kind of things are at or public engagement, they can always contact the planning department, department. they can always contact the planning department, but MetroCog has a really great website that has a lot of engagement and information for each one of the ones that we're talking about here.
The demographic study, really in that process, MetroCog is in charge of, for the metro-wide, helping us forecast our demographics. And so they're in the, probably about mid-process in that study, and we're estimating out to 2050. For Fargo's perspective, 2050, 2050 is really also trying to keep that in line with, you know, what does the city of Fargo's full build-out look like? And so that's kind of in that same vein of discussion. And the housing study is just kicking off. We selected a consultant, and this is our first-ever metro-wide housing study. And this housing study is really to look at all ranges of income, all ranges of market need, all ranges of subsidy need, and really start to take a understanding of how that economic engine of housing works in relation to our demographic growth and need. And a consultant was just selected, and right now they're in the data input stage. And so all the jurisdictions are sending information so that we can get all coordinated, which is actually gonna be one of the, I think personally, one of the best benefits of this study is that we have shared data. And then there'll be a lot of public engagement along the way, interviews, focus groups, things like, like that.
Okay, now we get to a little bit more of the engineering studies we're working on currently. So we have the 25th Street Corridor Study, starting at 32nd Avenue, going all the way down to 64th Avenue. So really what we're looking at that is, that is really a corridor that has been developed, and you've got a five-lane section and you've got a four-lane section. And just kind of looking at those volumes and working with the neighborhood of, what would you like to see that roadway look like in the future? We do have an overlay going on it this year, just to buy us some more time as we go through this process and kind of determine what that end product should look like. And then we're also hitting some of those areas that have access issues, congestion issues, safety issues. So we'll be evaluating those areas also. University Drive and 10th Street Corridor Study, that came out of the core neighborhood. I'll let Nicole jump in if she wants to, but that was a common comment as they went through the core neighborhood study. So working with Commissioner Preston, we really felt now was the time to just take a look at it and see what the vision is, what that street should look like, those types of things to help the neighborhoods, the core neighborhoods. And then we also have the Interstate Operations Study going on, and that's, they're just evaluating the operation of our interstate system through the metro and how that looks and what can be done as we look at those traffic volume projections. And then lastly, we have the Fargo Transportation Plan. That is one that all the staff have been very excited about. It's taking a look, we have multiple studies, so it's kind of putting their arms around all those studies and trying to get more into one area and give us more of a playbook to look at when we have, when we're getting ready to develop a corridor or redevelop a corridor. You know, is it gonna be heavier on pedestrians? Is it more of a moving of vehicular, moving vehicles throughout the city? And so kind of helping prioritize and then looking at different options of what those roadway networks can look like. And then another item we thought we'd like to share with you too in engineering is, we've got a lot of federal aid projects that are starting, just starting environmental review and getting those documents, or they're getting ready to final design. So we thought now would be a great time to get in front of you and just kind of get you updated on what engineering's been working on, on the federal aid side of our projects. And so the first is 52nd Avenue from 63rd to Cheyenne Street. We will be looking at rebuilding that bridge there and widening the roadway to the west. We are doing that work in conjunction with Cass County, because they will be doing the bridge work on Cheyenne Street at the same time. And so we've, we're, this summer, we're paving, Cass County's paving 76th Avenue from County Cheyenne Street over to 45th Street and up. And then we'll take it at city limits so that south of town has a different access in, since that corner will be cut off from the traffic. So we purposefully did it the same time so we could do it once and be done. And so we'll have that project. And then we do have another project we have in 2023 is the trail system. And so this is a shared use path that will be coming up the east side of Bison Meadows on the 10th Street alignment from 32nd Avenue to 37th Avenue North. And then planning and engineering have been working together on a north-side trail master plan. And so today, we don't have it connecting into the, the other trails, but we are working on getting those other connectivity points so that you can get back on the Red River Trail from here. Anything I missed, Megan? Okay. And then we also are just starting the environmental doc on Main Avenue. And so that is from University Drive to 25th Street. So we're just kicking off and starting the conversation, looking at different lane configurations. That is a corridor that is extremely tight. There aren't a lot of options there, and so we have just started that conversation. And then we have the Second Street Pedestrian Bridge. And so we are working on, we've had some public input on the Second Street Pedestrian Bridge, and so that is a 2024 project. And then the last one is, we do have some shared use path being proposed in the Hackberry-Harwood Drive-River Drive area. With the funding we have for 2023, we're not gonna be able to connect all of it, but that is a part of the Red River master plan, is to have that trail go along the river there. And so eventually, it will come all along the river and then kind of cut through and you'll be able to head north. So, and then lastly is, the city of Moorhead reached out to us, and they are looking to try and get some federal funds to do the 40th Avenue Ped Bridge. And so that would be a pedestrian bridge that would take you on 40th Avenue over to the Blue Stem. And so you'd be able to ride your bike on over and get over there for the events. And so that is something we did, that was in one of our requests this December for federal funds, but we have not heard back on which projects have been accepted on that. So that's kind of the last project we have. We're gonna start the environmental doc, because it seems like as funds or grants become available, they want that environmental documentation done, they want shovel-ready plans. So by getting that ahead of the game, then if something else comes up as a funding mechanism, we would have a project ready. That's what I got.
Questions, is there questions from anybody? I'll, I'll start off, I guess, on the Interstate Operations, does that include looking at a bypass at all, do you know?
Jeremy has been involved in most of those discussions, and not that I'm aware of. The bypass conversations have typically been through MetroCog, and that's where we've had those conversations.
That's what you and I were talking about earlier, because that was gonna be on the west side of the diversion, possibly, as a route that you would pick up to possibly go around the city and come all the way down. And I think that one probably will take a backseat, but I think we're really curious to find out in the future. They're just starting to talk about what's gonna happen on the dry, on the east side of the diversion with the possibility of the park trails, whatever. They're just starting to get, they don't want to muddy the waters right now with the diversion project itself, it sounds like. And who would take ownership of it? And, but I think something good is gonna come of that in the end. I'm more curious, you keep hearing rumbles about this 10th and University. And I don't know, I, I grew up on 10th Street when it was a two-way, and then it went to a one-way. And, you know, the way it moves traffic, it's hard to argue with it. That's, I mean, that's all I can say. I mean, I know the core neighborhood, but the core neighborhood, it, it only affects a small part of that area there, and it is considered now a state highway, isn't it?
Correct. So the DOT will be part of, of that conversation also. And I think, you know, right, we're studying it, we're gonna look at it, what should it look like? I don't think that means that's, so I know there's been a lot of articles about converting it to a two-way, and we've already decided, and we're just starting the conversation on, what should that corridor look like and feel like to help those core neighborhoods excel? And is there anything different that can be done that could help them excel better? Because you've also got, I mean, we all drive it, there are gorgeous trees aligned both sides of it also. So we wanna make sure that we're preserving those also.
Gotta get green showing there.
Okay, there we go. I'd like to speak to that, because I've been concerned about it for so many years, as Nicole does. No, I think I first wrote a letter to planning about 20 years ago about the core neighborhoods and the one-ways. One of these, there have been innumerable studies done across the country about one-ways, and the deterioration in the neighborhoods as a result. It turns out that the houses that are, have been at one time beautiful homes, most of them are rentals, because people don't wanna live right with that traffic. So there's a lot of deterioration, and then it creeps into the neighborhoods. There are a lot of positive things that have happened as a result of turning one-ways into two-ways, which happened downtown here, too. There was all the dread and trepidation about what was gonna happen, which is also a Highway 10. But there was a, there was a lot of support for going back to two-ways. And ever since then, in fact, I hear discussions frequently that people will say that it's so much better, it's so much more quiet, there aren't as many trucks. In fact, Hawthorne Neighborhood has come forward and said it's altered the nature of their neighborhood, because there isn't such chaos there, and it's safer for people to walk from the neighborhoods into downtown. We've heard really a lot about the racing on the one-ways. And the one-ways aren't just one neighborhood. They go all the way from 13th Avenue South up to 19th. And it's been established that there's a racing route that goes in a circle there, north on 10th and south on University. There are a lot of problems that exist because of the one-ways. And that investment in the neighborhoods is something that we have decided upon as citizens with the Core Neighborhood Plan. And I believe that the alter, the change back to two-ways would alter the core neighborhoods dramatically. There's a lot to be said about it. One of the problems is that 25th Street Corridor. I've been thinking for 20 years about what we can do, where can that traffic go that's on University and 10th Street? And obviously, the, the, either there's a, going to have to be a beltway. We do have I-29 and 94, which work pretty well. We also have 45th Street, and we have 25th. But if you look at 25th going up to NDSU, it's a major bungle up there, because you run into the railroad tracks and the big bridge there. And basically, 25th Street stops, and there isn't any real way to get to the university. So if you're looking at the kind of traffic, I watch it a lot since I work downtown here and go home. The traffic, you know, is coming from NDSU and another, a lot of other places, but going south on University. There's a lot of speeding, and there's a lot of congestion. And I would say also, living close to University, that there's also a lot of pollution in the neighborhoods that you don't see, except in the winter. You see it from the exhaust in the wintertime. So I think it's that they are actually creating a health hazard for the neighborhoods as well. I have a lot more to say about it, but that's all for now.
I guess question for staff is, what, what is the right way for us to provide input? I, I wanna have more comments here today, but what, what can we do to provide input?
So they, they have made this library?
Yeah, so, well, they haven't seen this. So, well, one, maybe just to back, pull back a little bit. One of the reasons we wanna talk through all of these council government studies and local studies with you is, I think it's a, each progress, each project has its own timeline and stage. And there's many checklist or items that are mandated by the federal government and the State Highway Department and the local government in terms of, there's those processes that are put in place. And, and so it could get confusing from a citizen's perspective. You see multiple different advertisements, outreach, Facebook posts, social media posts. But each project has its own communications and outreach plans. We're trying to do better, now that we're fully staffed, of looking for those opportunities to send your way for, whether it's a neighborhood meeting, a public engagement opportunity. So certainly as residents, as well as business owners, as well as commissioner representatives like yourselves, really encourage your feedback. So you'll see hopefully more communication coming from the city of Fargo and our office when those opportunities exist. I think some of them, like Brenda was saying, we're just trying to get shovel-ready projects, and that's one of the things that can happen, right? That visioning exercise is so far ahead of the construction timeline. Like Main Avenue in downtown, there was like a seven-year, eight-year gap between when the visioning process happened and when the construction happened. And so, you know, kind of connecting those, those dots, so that, to your answer, Commissioner Schneider is on the 10th and University, this is a, we're just kicking off a two-year study. And so the first and foremost on all of these studies is, what does the public think? What do our citizens think? And then how do we process that and think through that and present that back to you all and present that back to the elected officials, so that they can provide direction for the city staff or the consultants, et cetera? We're trying to make sure our consult, you know, all of these projects have consultants on them. All of these projects, we're working with multiple agencies, whether it's council of government, joint jurisdictions, in some way or another. And so we're looking for those opportunities, too, where we might have to pay pause and say, make sure, hey, here's a decision point that needs to get in front of our various recommending bodies and groups for feedback there. So we're trying to look for those opportunities, so that's a little bit more transparent. On the 10th and University, it's a two-year study. We're just kicking off the last week of July. And our consultants will actually be here in town doing kind of feet-on-the-ground reconnaissance, actually door-knocking with people that live up and down University and 10th Street, talking to business owners and residents. There's postcards being mailed, all sorts of things. So there's gonna be a really dynamic opportunity for public feedback. Certainly yourselves as citizens and individuals, providing comment, don't feel like you need to be filtered in any way of that regards. But then you'll have another hat to wear when you're sitting on this dais and representing those points of view as well. And so, lots of different ways.
You will be sending us the opportunities to kind of give us a heads-up when there's our, that's good. So I think Commissioner Morgan's comments are great, but I don't want people to make comments here expecting them to be sort of incorporated in.
No, no, and there's, you know, there's nine neighborhoods that touch these corridors, and that will be having neighborhood meetings and outreach as well. So a little bit on the 10th and University, I think this was the uh I think this was the main one to show you is that it's uh basically a two-year process. So um that's, that's a little bit of that background. I don't
So I guess do do commissioners have questions on on the work plan or is there something missing or other thoughts as as far as the projects Brenda brought forward?
Um I would like to talk also a little bit about uh the Jefferson Neighborhood Association just met last week, I think it was um with a representative from, I think it was the state. Anyway, it's the the project that's going from um Twenty-Fifth Street over to University. Um that's in the
Main Avenue.
Planning stage now. And um it was really interesting because they came forward with a plan that had been uh that is very similar to what they had spoken about going from University to the Red River. Uh with the action of citizens, that uh plan was changed and the road was narrowed uh with the turning lane in the center and one-ways on either side, uh which has impacted downtown very much in a positive way. So we spoke to um them about their usual plan of widening, widening. They were talking about putting a a roundabout on Eighteenth Street and I said, but it doesn't go anywhere. And, you know, Eighteenth Street just goes down into the Jefferson Neighborhood. Um better choice would be Twenty-Fifth. Um so that we could divert some of the traffic and industrial um uh traffic and into the more commercial and industrial areas rather than uh pulling them into downtown. So there are a lot of interesting theories, but there's a lot of work for the citizens to do to make sure they're fully informed and that they have a voice. So going to these public meetings is really important and the more you learn, uh the better the project will be.
Yeah, we um, I know the consultants have been meeting with some of the neighborhoods, like you had said, and so I mean, that's what we look for is that input on helping form what that road network should look like. And so, I mean, it is four lanes today, yet you don't have that center turn lane. So that is a lot of the items we're juggling with and then the impacts of removing a lane, what that does for the queuing and how far back the queuing would be. And so one of the reasons we started looking at a roundabout too is does that help with a signal queuing? So it's not to move traffic into the neighborhood south, but does that help get that flow out uh from the south, yet keep that east-west moving traffic? So we're, we're trying a lot of different options to see what will be the best to mitigate the speeds and then also improve the safety. And there's just not a lot of right-of-way there and the buildings are right adjacent. So we're really working hard to make it a more pedestrian-friendly corridor there.
Brenda, I have a question while you, while you're here. So on the previous slide, Slide six, the Bison Village Shared Path. So if the rest of the commission doesn't know, four planning commissioners sit on the MetroCog board, their policy board, I think it's Scott and John and myself and Miranda. Anyways, some version of that. Um we've been on there for a number of years. This was one of the projects MetroCog funded. And I guess the question for you is how does engineering or engineering and planning prioritize these? Because one of the always tricky things is being a Fargo representative on MetroCog is when this comes up and you know, I asked the question because all the other cities' projects matched the bike gap analysis that MetroCog did. Fargo's did not. They didn't have any projects in the bike gap analysis. And so it's like, okay, why do we do a plan showing where we have these gaps and then we don't fund them? And so this was one I asked a question on, I guess, had a good answer, I guess, from Jeremy, but I was curious how this, how that process works because we do go out and try to serve the city, but it was a little confusing.
Well, I know on this one, and I apologize, Jeremy's off today, so you get Brenda. And yeah, he is more knowledgeable on the trail system. But on this one, I know when we did the Bison develop addition, is it Bison? Bison Village Edition. I mean, that was always one item that was designed, I mean, that was always the intent of the development is to have a trail system that went up along um that backside and crossed over to provide that connectivity there um between University and Broadway. Um when we're taking a look at the different projects, you know, we have our, our, we do have gaps in our system, but some of those gaps are going to be included in a roadway reconstruction project. So we try and use those funds where maybe we don't have a road reconstruction project associated with it also. So that's um one of the reasons why some of those projects may pop up before um some of those bicycle gap projects. Because I do know some of them are awaiting a reconstruction project to parallel that.
And just to add, the other thing we're dealing with on the MetroCog level is there's a couple new funding sources from the Federal Infrastructure Bill, like the carbon reduction program that gives our metro area a million dollars a year for carbon reduction. It goes back to the cities to prioritize that. And I guess as commissioners, it'd be nice to be involved in that process somehow so that we can carry forward as a planning commissioner and as MetroCog commissioner to uh figure out how, what those funds should go to for new programs.
Yeah, and I think along those lines, um you saw it on the MetroCog, maybe just to uh demystify a little bit on the Met, your first question, the MetroCog project selection process. Um so once a year, each of the cities kind of send in a list to uh MetroCog and, you know, so you can imagine all the jurisdictions send in their, you know, wish list, if you will. And then they get kind of ranked and and scored and um, you know, kind of thrown on a, on a table and um, you know, all of these projects require some aspect of local funding match, uh generally speaking. And um but one of the things we're trying to kind of, this goes for all of our work, is tie it more directly to a strategy or comprehensive plan or a purpose, right? You know, so they're not just like what Nicole thinks for the day or what Jeremy thinks for the day. They're, they're tied to a master plan that you all, um as you executed so well in your last conversation, help hold about the vision, right? And whether it's you all or the elected officials or, you know, all the bodies along the way who touch it have, you know, some understanding of the bigger strategy and can kind of help funnel those comments and become champions of that work as well. So that's our ultimate goal is um getting these all connected. And like I said, a lot of times when we used to have these hour-long discussions with our planning commission and you have the full suite of the division engineers in front of you, where we'd literally have a, you know, lunch and learn um with a, you know, kind of shared table, so you could kind of dig in at a, at a deeper level. And so those are the kind of conversations I honestly were missing and we look forward to having more so. Um there might be an opportunity for some, for some more. We've been talking with uh Michael Ruddlinger, our new interim city administrator and Mayor Mahoney, Commissioner Preston and our other commissioners um too about, you know, maybe there's some opportunity for joint um brown bag or joint presentations where you've got planning commission and city commission together. Um, you know, again, so there's that dialogue. You know, I learned more from you in the last hour when you're having the discussion um on the previous item. Uh it was really helpful for me to hear that information as you guys are processing really hard decisions and seeing when we come to critical decisions like on Main Avenue or here or elsewhere. Um those, that feedback and dialogue is is really helpful and really important to help guide what we do on a daily basis.
I'll just add, I know, use personal privilege, I guess, but you mentioned the Red River Trails and the Red River Greenway Study, but my uh you know, the, the trail networks in Fargo and Moorhead are incredible along the river, but it hits the VA Hospital and they just stop. And so this bike trail here, you mentioned Brenda, connecting it to the Red River Trail, but there is no Red River Trail until you get, you know, to the VA, which is a long ways away. And so hopefully the Greenway Study is taking into that into account is working with the VA and the the neighborhood to the north to connect it all the way. So Commissioner Shuey can ride the river trails all the way up to Highland Park from here. You know, that's, that would be the goal and all the way down to Blue Stem. So I think that would be pretty cool.
Yeah, I regularly delay things on Elm Street during the connect, so. Is, is there a intention then to tie this in together with the Fargo twenty-thirty plan or does this stand alone or opportunity to refresh and?
No, absolutely. It all connects together. And so one of the next discussion items, I think, topic-wise, you know, if there's other topics you want us to present in these hour-long meetings, just um our touchpoints with you, just let us know. But uh is literally that. How did this, how does the strategic plan like Go twenty-thirty connect to maybe a corridor study that connects to maybe an area plan? Yeah, how did this, how does the strategy connect to the implementation? And it, we should always be able to find a thread or a line, right? And and so um on the list for us on our work plan is uh updating our growth plan and uh updating our land development code. Uh this is all in tandem with this. So they should all connect in terms of those big strategies and then lastly, the Go twenty-thirty um is getting close to needing some updates as well.
And you guys will be proud. The first thing engineering does when we do have a project is we take our studies out. Nicole's now proud of us. Because the first thing we'll say is we're following, we're following the playbook. So so that is one of the first things we've been looking at as we look at different corridors, different water main replacement projects. What is what is the request of that corridor? What does the plan say that corridor should look like?
Commissioner Gunkelman?
Um you haven't mentioned the LDC in this discussion. So what is happening? I mean, we've had the consultants. Um what is the um game plan over the next few years with the LDC?
Yeah, so just to bring everybody up to date where we're at, um so about uh, gosh, two years ago, uh uh we hired Lisa Weiss Consulting and did an audit of our land development code to just see how broken, we all knew the code was broken to some degree. How broken is it really? And so they did an assessment and an audit and then came up with three strategies, presented that to the planning commission and the city commission, uh gosh, probably about a year and a half ago. And at that time, um the city commission said, yes, charge on and go for the full rewrite of the land development code. Uh meanwhile, uh we then did a technical uh kind of training with the staff. Uh and I believe the planning commission was invited to that as well. Um s- um certain members are uh, we did a short brief and a long brief uh on basically the vision of our future land development code is what we would call a form-based code. And um and so with that form-based code, uh, you know, requires a lot of resources and energy to go into that. Uh quite honestly, um at the same time as we're finishing our Core Neighborhood Plan, uh both our consultants of the Core Neighborhood Plan and our land development code work said, you know, you really should be thinking about your growth plan because that's where you're the most vulnerable as a community. And so we are probably, uh so we uh took that under advisement and um basically are prioritizing our growth plan update, which would then inform the vision for that land development code and Go twenty-thirty update. So um the Go twenty, the the growth plan update, uh which is why we have Kim Sotrowski now on staff um is helping us work on that as long as our other team members. Uh we hopefully are aiming towards mid-August for an RFP uh let of that growth plan update. There's a lot of internal coordination. And I would just say, quite honestly, uh the pandemic hit our department pretty hard. And so um uh we could have a whole other brown bag on what we've been doing for the last two years in terms of getting us ready. I would say we finally have every seat filled in our department. We have some great staff that we just added. That back row, I think, all have a tenure of about a month. And um and so uh we're really excited to um bring on our full team. So we had six staff replacements in the last six months. And so um it's seven if you include the, uh eight if you include our administrative staff, our front desk staff and our community development staff.
Any other questions?
I'd like to ask Brenda. Um I've been concerned about the Tw- Twenty-Fifth Street going north for years on end. And I'm just wondering if, I'm sure it's been discussed a hundred times, but has there any, been any solution as to what happens to um Twenty-Fifth Street going north from Maine?
As far as
I think as, as, you know, connecting with Twelfth Avenue North, you know, there is no connection between Twenty-Fifth and Twelfth Avenue North. I think that's probably
Yeah, it's part of, part of that. Because there's only that local road that turns into an avenue and sing. I don't, with the viaduct there, there really is no ability to connect it into Twelfth Avenue any other way with the railroad grade separation there.
Yeah, that's what I can thought. So um then that, that traffic that is pretty heavy going every direction except north on Main and Twenty-Fifth, um is there any way to divert that traffic that goes north or is it just going to remain as it is?
Yeah.
I guess the avenue is out to I twenty-nine.
So the, the north, the north-south car- corridors are really are what they are. You have the Twenty-Fifth Street, but it does have to curve over to connect to Twelfth Avenue. And you have the I twenty-nine and you have the University and Tenth Street. And to make adjustments to that Twenty-Fifth Street, that's just not going to happen with that grade separation there.
Sure. Yeah, the other problem, of course, up there is the dome. And if um that traffic could be diverted out to I twenty-nine, that would be wonderful rather than taking University down, you know, into South Fargo. But people establish patterns of movement and they become accustomed to them and I guess with uh traffic flow, I'm sure you've considered that many times.
Any other questions? If not, you know, thank you both to the engineering department, thank your staff and thank to our planning staff here. It's a lot of good work and sorry for all of you that told your significant others that you might be home early. That was what, didn't happen. But no, we appreciate the good discussion and uh have a good night and take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
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 Thank you, everybody.